We will call this meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners to order. I will ask Madam Clerk to please call the roll.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Womack, Teal, Steck, Sparks, Ponstein, Pakla, Oliver King, Morse, Morales, Merchant, McLeod, LaGrand, Coleman, Hildenbrand, Hennessy, Halsted, Faber, DeBoer, Vice Chair Burl, Commissioner Boojak, Chair Green.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 members present, you have one absent, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Three, which is the invocation I will call on Commissioner Pakla.
Chair Green, colleagues, thank you so much for the opportunity to address you with an invocation today. Those of you that have been here in the last session might recall my exploration of what an invocation is meant to do, which is to invoke us to consider the weight of our actions in this room. You might also recall my reading of quotes from JFK, Abraham Lincoln, Mahatma Gandhi, and Pericles, voices that all remind us that democracies like ours are not self-sustaining. The mention of Pericles further reminds us that democracy comes from the word demos, meaning the people. It's in contrast to the word aristocracy, which comes from Aristo or the elite. In a democracy, we choose to entrust power to the people and not the privileged. But that leads to a deeper question: why do we entrust power to anyone at all? So today, my invocation explores why do we govern? Across eras and empires, people have gathered to ask, what can we do together that we could not do alone? These are questions that have been debated and honed throughout time in ancient Athens, in the marketplace of ideas, the agora; in ancient Rome, it was debated in the Senate. Marcus Aurelius, the philosopher emperor, once said that what brings no benefit to the hive brings no benefit to the bee. And then, as in now, we recognize that we're all entangled in a common fate. Government is not created for convenience, it's created for coordination, for organizing our shared hopes and our shared responsibilities. As societies advance, so did our understanding of what government could be. It wasn't just a tool for punishing wrongdoings or defending borders. It became the collective voice that said, this is what we value, this is who we protect. Now, we all may have our own opinions on those pieces, what we value and who we take care of, but government is one of the few institutions whose job it is to make sure that everyone has a seat at the table, even when they can't pay the cover charge. Former HUD Secretary Julian Castro reminds us that the American dream is not a sprint or even a marathon, but it's a relay. Government exists to hand off the baton, to extend opportunity forward to the next generation. Here in Kent County, we don't govern in slogans, apart from our actual slogan, Your Partner, Your Place. We govern in square footage of affordable housing. We govern in tons of metal diverted from the landfill. We govern in dollars for veterans accessing services that they deserve. We govern in how many children receive early interventions and the prevented future cost to families, to schools, and to our communities. Our task here is not to perform ideology, it is to solve problems. It is to hear people and to act deliberately, thoughtfully, and with urgency. We on the commission are not here as individuals, we're here because we believe that public service is still worth doing, and still worth doing well. We believe that government exists because we are all entangled in a common fate, that the collective voice of values is stronger than the individual opinion, that everyone deserves a seat at the table. James Madison once wrote in the Federalist Papers, if men were angels, no governments would be necessary. But since we are very much not angels, we need institutions, we need guardrails, that help us move forward together when it would be easier to just fall apart. This body, this commission, is one of those institutions. The work we do today joins a legacy of public service that stretches from city halls to school boards to Congress and back again. This work matters, and if we don't invoke the weight of our work, then who will? So today, as we begin, let us ground ourselves not just in process, but in purpose. Let us remember that we're not here to score points, we're here to solve problems. Let us remember that compromise is not weakness, it's the tool that makes pluralism possible. And let us remember that democracy isn't a guarantee, it's a practice, and we are the current stewards of that practice. May we serve well, may we listen closely, and may we always ask, what can we do together that none of us could do alone? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioner Pakla, I'd like to move to Agenda Item Number Five, which is the Special Order of Business. I'd like to welcome up our Kent County Treasurer, Peter McGregor, and his team. Good morning, Treasurer McGregor, you have up to three minutes.
Three. I'm already in the penalty box.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and good morning, board members. As I go through these slides, feel free to stop me, Mr. Chair, if you want to discuss any of the items, or we can wait till the end for the Q and A. And with me, I have my chief deputy, Steve, and my financial supervisor, Jennifer. So if I don't have the answer, I'll be looking to them to help me answer any questions that the board may have. So obviously, I'm not going to read this, but this is the treasurer's department mission and responsibilities. Most is mandated by state statute and our state constitution. The one note I want to point out here on this slide is that the county treasurer protects all the interests, all the interests of all our taxpayers, not just the ones that are delinquent or the ones that do pay their taxes, so all of them. Here's the information that you can review on your own about my team. We continue to be excellent stewards of the resources that are given to us by you, the board, and through our processes. We continue to write, keep a tight ship, and you can kind of read some of the areas there. But again, as a reminder, our team serves both internal customers, that would be all the departments within the county, and our external customers as well. This is the meat of the presentation. These are the treasurer's three main department goals: investing funds, collecting the lodging tax, and collect delinquent real property tax. Again, I like to include this slide, just as a reminder, and it illustrates our investment philosophy and our guidelines. SLI is an acronym, obviously, for Safety, Liquidity, and Yield. The weight favors the safety, that's kind of my number-one concern. Safety is always the most important to that whole SLI principle. Our investments are guided by both state statute, which is Public Act 20, and our county's investment policy as well. And you can see, again, my number-one duty is to safeguard the public funds, so that's kind of my objective, or my office objective. Continuing on with investments, this graph gives you a picture of the investment income over the past five years, just under $3 million in 2024. You can see that, you know, the trajectory on this is definitely going up, and that's due to the market better and better since 2001. This is a summary of the types of accounts that we have our investments in, and you can see that most of our investments currently, and this changes every quarter to every six months, is in CDs, and the CD markets, in which we're helping supporting our regional banks and our credit unions. You can see in the interest rate, that's as of June of earlier this year, it's gone down a bit. And if you can recall back, right before the election, I think it was the end of September, that the feds cut 50 basis points, so we took a little dip there, but we're starting to bounce back now, so the end of the year should be well above that. You can see that Kent County is only one of two counties in this state that allows or provides county pools. And again, we continue to offer this at no cost to our local units and other partners throughout the county, other agencies or authorities. And you can note that, you see that there was a reduction in the pool from last year, about $30,000, $35,000, and that is because the CAA pulled out of the pool earlier this year, which it was not a problem. It was a big chunk of money that was in our pool, and those type of things make me nervous when the majority of the pool is one entity. And just sitting down with them, it was probably the best move for both the county and for the CAA. Moving on to goal number two, this is the collection of the hotel motel excise tax. And I know the board is well aware of this because of the votes that you've taken, or actions you've taken, but for the general public, as of January of 2025, the tax increased from 5% to 8%. So the total for 2025 will be probably closer to about $23 million that are generated by this excise tax. I know that last star there that shows as of June 30th, we have collected almost $11 million. I just looked it up this morning, and as at the end of August, we've collected $15 million. So it's definitely, you know, will be hitting our goals that were set in this excise tax. We're fortunate to have, to have sticky fingered, no, we're fortunate to have the platform Airbnb cooperating with the county, because you can see the money generated from Airbnb or the short-term rentals that are on a platform Airbnb generates about the third-largest of all the hotels and motels that pay that excise lodge tax. Not all sites have been working with us, the hosting site, the issue is with Verbo or VBRO. State law assigns tax collection responsibilities to the host and not the host platforms, and they're taking that, basically using that as an excuse not to be involved. They're pointing the fingers to their clients, which would be the hosting agencies, which is completely different than Airbnb. Airbnb actually is a platform who collects this for the host. So we have two sides of the coin here, but we have some ideas on how to move forward in something like this. But with Airbnb being the third-largest, just imagine if we could get, you know, maybe, I don't think it'll double it, because a lot of people that are on Verbo's are also Airbnb sites as well. So that is something that we continue to work on. So, third department goal is the collection of delinquent taxes. Every March, the county treasurer accepts the delinquent tax rule from our local entities through the process called settlement. And with that, that's when I come to the board and ask for the authorization to take out a short-term, two-year note to borrow for two years, because that's the money we use to pay back for those delinquent taxes to our local units, our cities, our townships, and also to our schools and the millages. So we make them whole so they can continue to provide the services to our citizens of our county. So you can see that the delinquency dollar amount has been trending up over the last five years. We looked a little bit deeper into this, and it doesn't mean that the numbers of parcels are growing quite a bit. They're pretty much level. So the number of parcels have been increasing minimally, but you can tell that the dollar amounts are going up. So if that's something that the board would like to discuss more, I can get into that as well. When it comes to foreclosures, our team works tirelessly to prevent the loss of property. Homeowners that actively work with my team to solve their delinquency, we give them a lot of grace. Our objective is to help families and property owners to avoid tax foreclosure. We collect taxes in my office. We do not want to be known for the ones that foreclose on homes in our office, so I'd much rather be the tax collector, and I know that's a tough gig sometimes to say that that's what I do, but I also want to make sure people know that I prevent foreclosure. So we like to avert any type of negative event like that, and we pretty much prevent over 98% of all tax foreclosures within our county. This slide will give you the stats of the process over the past four years, kind of looking at 2025. 2025 is, these are foreclosed on the delinquent parcels from the 2022 prior tax year. So we started with almost 1,500 forfeitures on March 1st, but by April 1st, we got it down to 30 properties that we foreclosed on. You can see 22 of those properties were vacant or unbuildable, I call them junk lots. Six were unoccupied or condemned, had zero P R E, and unfortunately, we had a couple that just weren't willing to work with my office, and worst-case scenario happened there. But over the last, I don't know, 20-some years, actually, this is the last five years, our foreclosure rate has been about 24 per year. I would like to include this slide for everyone to review, because this is pretty much the due process of the foreclosure cycle. Another objective of our department is definitely good customer service. We strive to be accommodating to our customers, and that accessibility and convenience of electronic payments has been a huge game changer for our office. If someone doesn't have to come into the county building and can do it right from their home, they're a much happier person in a very trying time that they're going through with the delinquent taxes. So more than a third are paid on some sort of electronic way, and the majority of those are at no cost, because they use the ACH system. We continue to improve our communications through providing, we have two staff members that are bilingual, and all of our information pamphlets, resources, guidelines, they're all printed out and distributed both in English and in Spanish. Our statements are both in English and Spanish. So, you know, that's trying to bridge that communication gap with our delinquent customers is very key. I can't get through this without pointing out the AAA bond rating or AAA credit rating, and you can see how significant that is and who benefits from us maintaining that AAA bond rating. Home for Generations, this is something I brought up last year during this time. It was a concept in a, this is a program that we're trying to get off the ground, and we finally got our first case, and it was, her name is Nicole, and her father passed away and left her this house that was in shambles, couldn't live in it, and it was the tax, there was a tax default on it. So with the help of the probate courts and home repair services, the pro bono legal services team that we have developed, she's on her way of preventing foreclosure, but she will also reduce her taxes, she'll build equity, she'll qualify for assistance, she'll receive tax deductions, and she'll actually have a home to live in once the process ends here. So I'm pretty happy with that, and this is just the first. So this is something that we think we could probably do this a dozen times over the years. These are who we do, we have key collaborations with, you can review that. Again, if no one on the board has visited Home Repair Services, I suggest that you do. It's a wonderful place to go. It really, it's worth your time, you know, spending an hour or two there and learning all about what they do. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll take any questions on.
Thank you, Treasurer McGregor. I'll open it up for questions in a second, but I know that there are days when we have a shorter agenda, that the Special Order of Business tends to go very long. But I will remind everyone that we have a rather lengthy work session later today, so if we can, and Pete's office is very accessible to all of us, so let's be judicious about our questions this morning. Okay, with that, does anybody have any questions or feedback for Pete? Yes, Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Green. Peter, thanks for being here today. The thing that struck me is that, you know, the work your office has done to not stop the foreclosures, but limit them, but on the right side there, the rate of people that are having trouble paying taxes is growing every year. And every year, as a state, county, we have new millages that are the burden, not of taxpayers, but the burden of property owners. We have millages for the zoo, the museums, for schools, for busing, for libraries, and this burden is growing. What do you foresee the future? Is there going to be a tipping point where the housing market's going to crash because no one can pay their taxes?
Well, we have a short agenda, so I won't.
You get right to the point.
So I guess that the question is, is this a precursor? Is this kind of, is it an indicator of the future? And it's funny, because I brought this, I knew this question was going to be asked, because it is every year. Since 2021, it has gone up. So when I said we dug a little deeper, are the number of delinquencies going up? Very minimal. So it's the same number of delinquencies, it's just the amount, the cost of delinquency is much higher on that. So those that are struggling to begin with struggle even more under these circumstances, when every year that, so if you're just delinquent one year, you don't want to pay the next year, you want to pay your oldest tax first, right? But the next year, it's going to be even higher, because every year, your rate is going to go up a tick, or two, or 5% sometimes. So, and I really have no control over the delinquency that comes in to the county. It's a bigger issue that I'm not sure that any of us in this room can answer without saying, possibly, we need to change our state law. We need to change how we tax, and I know this is, I'm starting to touch that third rail here, because this county depends on property taxes, just like our local units. And so many areas depend on property taxes. So when I say we need to change how we assess property taxes, it opens up a huge can of worms, and we need a legislature and an executive branch that agree with that, because that's the only way that that's going to change.
I appreciate you and all the work you've been putting into the country.
Thank you.
That's one of the, I mean, that's the one area we're agreeing to, to hold. Yeah, that's a, that's a big step. It's a huge step, because, I mean, we're getting there. The tax system in the state is not fair. It burdens property owners. And people like I, that I can pay my taxes very easily, I can feel for the ones that can, and are struggling to stay at home.
The state has worked on legislation and has passed new laws that deal on the edges symptoms of this problem, and that would have been excess proceeds. So if someone does have to have their property foreclosed on, at least, if I'm able to sell it at auction for more than what is due, they can claim those excess proceeds. So at least they get a chance to start over. And that's what we do for these individuals, these two that didn't quite figure out a way to work with my office.
Commissioner Faber.
I think you just asked my question, or answered my question, which was, where are we with the proceeds? I know there's been a couple statewide cases, just wanted a local update.
All right, I got to be careful that I don't say things I shouldn't, so Linda will yell at me if I go down a road that maybe I shouldn't. But prospectively, everything is, I don't want to say perfect, but we have a system that is running well for those who have been foreclosed on and lost their property from '21 on, so since I've taken office. Those are the ones that we're not going to have any issue with. It's the retroactivity is our concern.
How far back does it go?
Well, certain attorneys want to go back to 1998, but I think state statute will, or not state statute, the precedent is six years, I would think 2014, possibly.
Great. And then, one more quick one. So before these get turned over to us, to the treasurer, the local unit has to sort of pass them along. Do the local units have things in place before it gets to us that they implement, or is that it's just kind of a automatic, hey, it's delinquent, it on it goes? Thanks.
Yes and yes. So it depends on if the citizen is willing to engage with them, they will engage, but the cities know they're going to be made whole. I mean, there's always a chance in moving forward that we can charge back. If for some reason I can't sell it, sell the property in auction, we would charge back those fees to the local units and millages and school district. But they do have, offer all sorts of, not only programs, but they also have exemptions, but you've got to qualify for them, and there's steps in doing that. So it's just not automatically given. One of them would be a poverty exemption, another would be a veteran, if you're 100% disabled, a veteran's exemption. They do things like that, but they don't advertise them as much as you think they should to help out the people.
Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Treasurer. Thank you for being here. Appreciate your presentation, as always. I noticed you had a slide that included that your team has shrunk over the past, you know, 16 years, 17 years, something like that.
And that's before AI, too.
That's right. Well, and that's really what my question is, is, you know, thinking through the fact that you are certainly overcapacity in the work that you have to do with your team. What are the technological pieces, or the technology pieces that you are using or could be using in the future to help you all do more of the good work that you're doing and create less of a burden for you all?
Well, you know, the General Property Tax Act has changed it a few times over the years, and most, the biggest change before that 7080, which is the surplus claims, was in '98, when it just completely changed, and so I think that's probably when we were at our highest level. Also, computers. I mean, going from spreadsheets, and I think I had a picture of spreadsheets last year, there's probably like 12 people at our counter, 12 employees at our counter, you know, dealing with customers, but I would think the use of outsourcing a lot of our needs when it comes to computer programs, the platforms that we use. We use a company called Title Check, who do a lot of our due process, which is key. I mean, I'd probably have to employ four people for, to do those items that Title Check does for us, they're in Kalamazoo County, but just to go out and post properties, I mean, we source that out. So, you know, we run a tight ship, obviously maintaining, where we are right now is my objective, without having someone steal one of my employees to go to a different department or a different, is also key. So keeping our employees happy is also key to that. But I would just think technology has probably been the best part of why we're able to run a tight ship.
Commissioner Hildenbrand.
Thank you, Chair Green. Thank you for the presentation, Treasurer McGregor. I just wanted to commend you, you know, to bringing public service kind of to the next level. You know, as a tax collector, you could put your fist down and not really want to be workable with people and just say, sorry, it's not our problem, you know, we're taking your home, you didn't pay your taxes. But you have proven over the years to take, you know, customer service of government to the next level. You will make house calls to people, you'll answer their phone calls, you know, it's just exceptional public service, and we've seen it, and we want to commend you for that, and just keep it up. It's a shining example of how we, as elected officials, sort of serve the constituents we represent, so keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't wear the tie when I go and knock on doors, though, so.
I know you're real familiar with your Bible, Pete, but you don't sound like the tax collectors I read about. the tax collectors I read about in there. So, we appreciate that. Commissioner Womack.
Yes. Thank you for your services, always. One of my questions was, I get from some of my constituents, is about the interest and fines on delinquent taxes. And I also let them know that some of those start with their local municipalities. But could you give me a little calculation on how these interest and fines are, and do you think they're fair?
They're a lot. And, and they're correct. They're, they're, they're quite a bit. So, when you're at the, when you're delinquent, or I should say, late at the local level, I think there's a 1% fee per month. I also think there's an administration fee to that. But then, when they get turned over after a year of delinquency to the county, that changes to 1.5%, going back to when it was first delinquent. So, 1.5% over takes three years to foreclose, it's quite a bit. I mean, you're talking close to 18-plus percent a year. So, it's as bad as a terrible credit card. So, that's why we encourage people to make partial payments. The local level doesn't like partial payments, they like it all at one time. But when, when I get it, it's like, make partial, and we, we, we try and work out a payment plan with, with these people, because it helps on that interest to make these partial payments. But the 1.5% interest in all the fees that, that we collect to, to pay for the services that we have to do to, for the due process to finally foreclose, if that's what happens, are all in state statute. So, the state law, so if, if we could change the state law to reduce that, or change that, that would be how, how we change that. But it's pretty much, let's make as many, I mean, even if you did 50 bucks a week, we'll accept it. And it's easy to do online now.
Well, thank you for that added information. I just want to say, thank you, thank you, because I know you're in a thankless job, but thank you, thank you, for all you've done in my community, with the time that you've put out to put outreach in there, education. You have saved over 25 homes that I probably know off the top of my head, from people that may not want to answer their mail, or may have been afraid to approach your office and make partial payments. And you also let people know grant opportunities that were out there from the state. And I know people who were successful at applying for those. So, just wanted to really thank you for taking that extra time and putting that energy in to save a lot of homeowners. And through me, I'm sure they want to thank you, too.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you for your help. There's times that I'm calling the commissioner, I'm like, do you know this person? Of course, his answer, he knows everybody. He's like, yes. And, and he kind of helps me bridge that, because sometimes there's a trust issue there.
Yes.
So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. So, thank you for this presentation. I'm always excited to see our numbers continue to stay steady in terms of the, the foreclosures that are averted. So, two questions. So, I, I just wondered where Kent County stands in relation to other counties, in terms of the number of foreclosures that are averted. So, is everyone at 98%? Or are they quite a bit lower?
No.
Okay.
Go ahead.
And, and then the second question was just in relation to, you mentioned the VRBO and the, the collecting of the lodging taxes due. I just wondered if you could give an update on, in terms of the legal sort of ramifications, or what, what sorts of legal options are there available to get them to comply to that, and not to keep diverting it to the actual homeowners that are using your platform?
Yep. I don't know which one is an easier question, probably the first one. Let's go there first. Just, so, the Treasury collects these numbers every year, but it takes them a while to put it. So, I think the last one I saw was 23. Wayne County had, I don't know, about 3,400 foreclosures. That year, I had 13. Flint had 1,500, you know, that year, we had 13. But Ottawa had eight. So, it's, it's, Ingham had about 101. Washtenaw had about 150. So, it really all depends on the size and the number of parcels you're dealing with. So, you get some communities up north, maybe one or two. But if it's a parcel that has a lot, is, is difficult to sell, I mean, you're going to be in the red the whole way on that, never get those tax dollars taken care of. So, there'll be chargebacks to the local on, on some of those. So, it really depends on that. But that kind of gives you a little perspective of the numbers. I'm, I'm fortunate, we're, we're considered a big county, but we have, we, we do it well, both locally and, and county, we do it well. The second part, and I don't know, Linda, if, if that memo that was sent to me could be shared with the, the Board of Commissioners, or not, but Linda had one of her team members dive into this. What are, what can we do about the verbos? Because it seems to be working with, with Airbnb, but not with them. If we want to continue to put more resources and more dollars into it, we could become good at, at managing or policing these verbos, you know, going, but it's going to take a huge effort and some appropriations, and some money and resources, and whether we can partner up with certain area, I, I don't know. It's, it's, we're, we're at a point where we have to make that decision, and I'm not sure which is the best. The cleanest would be, let's get the, the state statute changed, amended. So, then, it, the burden is on the platform, not the host. Because if it's the platform, then, then we're dealing with one, VRBO, like we are with Airbnb, instead of individual. You know, there could be hundreds of them. And, and I don't have a staff to go visit hundreds of these. We have 120 hotel motels right now, and we do about a third a year with one staff member, and that's all she does, is she, she audits them. Now, you add, you double or triple that, it's going to be real difficult. And the, and the amount of money we're getting from each individual one, they're weekend people, you know, so that's going to be dollars where hotel motel, it's every day of the week, and it's large numbers.
Thank you.
So, it's more of a return on the investment that, that we have to calculate.
I had a follow-up to that, Pete, which is one of mine. That statute that governs that piece, I know there've been a lot of changes in state statute that govern short-term rentals in the last decade or so. Is that new? Or has, is that an intentional omission? Or, let me, Linda, Linda looks like she wants to weigh in.
The statute hasn't been changed on that. When we worked with Airbnb many, many years ago, it was a voluntary agreement on their side. It does leave a few things to be desired as far as audit ability and things along those lines. But we reached out at the same time, and this was under Ken Parrish, to Verbo. And at that point, their answer was, we don't have the staff internally at Verbo to change their computer system to collect the tax. They are collecting for various states. Pete and I have talked about a couple ideas to try and put pressure on the platform. But their whole position is, like so many other platforms in e-commerce, it's not us, we're not the seller, we're not selling this product, we're just providing a, a platform for people to advertise. And that's why the state statute leaves us wanting, because the state statute puts the tax obligation on the actual owner of the house, the actual host. There are services out there that we could access, that would scrape the internet for every listing, and give us a list of all of the, the verbos in town. But then, it falls back to Pete's staff, or some other staff, to write the letters, to try and get to all those hosts, and to try and collect individually. So, the question is, can, can we come, creative way of putting a little bit more pressure on Verbo to, to come to the table, because they do have agreements with certain states.
So, we're designed to, to collect and distribute and audit the hotel motel taxes. That, that's the part that, you know, and I think when that was designed by this board years ago, I don't think Airbnb or Verbo was even, it, it was a blip on the radar. It was, it wasn't as big as they are now. The short-term rental is a whole nother level. And, and to, to just, to set up the, the mechanism to, to identify, to manage, to collect, to audit, I, I, I'm not going to say we couldn't do it, but it's going to, I'd rather try and figure out a way where I'm not coming to this board and asking for, for more money. I'd rather try and figure out a way to do it without increasing the budget.
Yeah. Appreciate that. Thanks for, Linda, as well. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. Pete, thank you for your great work, and your department's great work. Just a quick question, following up on excise revenue. It's great that Airbnb does this, and has apparently agreed to do this by agreement with us, and then self-reports that. What percentage, if we have any sense, what percentage of the short-term rentals in Kent County does Airbnb represent? In other words, what's the scope of what we're not collecting?
Well, without actually hiring someone to scrape the internet for us and do that, and, and, you know, for $50,000, you can, we can do that like that. A lot of the, the verbos are also Airbnb. It would be like, if you're an Uber driver, you're probably also a Lyft driver, too. So, you do both platforms. It's just Airbnb tends to want to protect its customers, where verbos are like, you do it on your own, you know, if they come after you, it's not our problem. So, it's two different philosophies. I know that as the third largest payer of, of our excise taxes, just under 5% of that, that total amount that we've collected this year. So, I, I don't know if I can, I have enough information to tell you
Yeah, okay.
what's still out there. And, and that's where we'd, we'd have to get together and figure out the return on investment if we decide to go down this road.
And VBR is not the only other one. There are other platforms emerging, because this is really a developing dynamic in, in short-term state. What you might consider doing is looking at some of the competitor analysis, that, that I think do have a sense about where their percentage is, where Airbnb is in their percentage. So, that data may be out there in the marketplace already to give you some sense. Because if it gets back to the question that do we allocate funds in order to do this, because we've looked at this for years, because I think it's a matter of fairness. It's a matter
Oh, yeah.
fairness to our hotelers. So, we, we could take a look and get a sense about, is there $2 million out there that's being uncovered? What is it?
Right, right. No, and I appreciate that. That's something that we'll definitely review, and hopefully, this time next year, or earlier, I can report back and give you some more information, so we can make a smarter, a smarter decision.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you for your judiciousness. Colleagues, appreciate that. I had one quick final one, Pete. This Home for Generations, it sounds like a really cool program. Is that an initiative exclusive to Kent County that you guys have started, or have you borrowed from others that are doing that elsewhere?
I did not invent this wheel.
Okay.
So, it was something that both Washtenaw County does, and Calhoun County. Genesee is dabbling in it, just like we are, because everybody would do it a little different. The biggest hurdle that we had is convincing your probate judges that this is, there's a need here. And both our judges jumped on board like that. And then, finding a partner in, in the, the pro bono world, and, and we found a partner, I mean, those were the, I thought those were going to be very difficult, but here, here in Kent County, it was not. So, the tough part now is, is letting people know that are in these desperate situations that, that we have this program to help them. So, it's more getting the message out. We're, we're working out, ironing out that, that the wrinkles right now are the details. So, hopefully, like I said, that we'll have more than just one this time next year.
That's great. It's just a classic West Michigan example of, you know, we've got a, a neighbor in need, and an elected official here in one space that's willing to help, and goes out and partners with other elected officials who say absolutely, and the nonprofit says we'll help out, too. And so, I just appreciate that you're working in that way, and appreciate the servant's heart that you bring to the work.
Thank you.
We, we, we appreciate your leadership. So, thank you. And I'd be remiss to not, I know you mentioned your team, but thank you to the whole office. I know there's a cast of supporters behind you that helped make it go, so.
Yeah, you know better, don't you?
I won't comment on that, Pete. Well, thank you very much, guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we will move to Agenda Item Number Six, which is public comment related only to the Agenda Action Items. Is there anyone for public comment related to the Agenda Action Items today? I see none. We will move to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is the Consent Agenda. I will call on Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's my pleasure to move the Consent Agenda for today's meeting.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hildebrand. Questions, comments, discussion on the Consent Agenda. I see none. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda, Commissioners Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Morse.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Halsted.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioner Boojak.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. The Consent Agenda is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Eight, which is Resolutions. We have but one today, and for 8A, I will call on Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. I move approval of Resolution 87 of today's date, which calls for the approval of the 2025 Appropriation Report, comes to us from the Bureau of Equalization.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Womack. I believe I heard Commissioner Steck say apportionment report and not appropriation report, correct?
That's what you heard.
That's what I heard. Okay. It's been moved and supported. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? I see none. This is again, a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 87, Commissioners Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Halsted.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioner Boojak.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 87 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is public comment related to general county matters. If you have public comment this morning, please give us your name and address. You have up to three minutes. Good morning, DeAndre.
Grand Rising. I am Dee Jones. I stay at 910 Orchard Apartments, 1D. I'm staying on Temerack now. I got forced out of the apartment I used to stay in, over there on Temerack. It's crazy. But just thinking of the vision, so I can actually think of the days of the, days I'm going to be on TV. October 27th, I'll be on Fox 17, speaking about bringing colleges and high schools and universities across the United States to the DeVos Place. Super excited. As the Chair of the Stocking Community Hub, I was just on ABC 13, speaking about the Stocking Community Hub. Nice to sit and chat with all, see that we got a lot in common, all, than us just being human beings. And it was just good to speak to you about it. I'm looking also excited to speak to IFF, which I'm actually going to speak to IFF about the equity-based houses. We don't want to call them tiny houses, but we want to call it equity-based housing. And we're going to speak to them about the revolving, revolving loan fund. I've been sitting here since ARPA. I remember I had a community center project that I tried to do in ARPA. It was actually a vision. But I'm going to show you Kent County Commissioners that were there when y'all approved those ARPA funds, that I never gave up on that vision. Y'all going to see how beautiful I can do things for the community. Oh, I'm never going to forget that. I got to still stand on business about that. But just thankful, because also, then November 7th, I'll be going on Channel 8, and I'll be speaking about the esports finals at the DeVos Place. And then, I'll be going on Channel 13, and I'll be speaking about the esports finals at the DeVos Place. And it's going to be colleges and universities and high schools all across the United States that are going to be here. And I'm an African-American leader, and I'm going to change the economy. I'm going to show the state, the United States, the United Nations. One day, Donald Trump is going to hear about the stuff I'm doing with Party, as I'm on a streaming platform, I'm on a streaming blockchain platform. I'm actually the first paid streamer in the state of Michigan, on a blockchain. And I get paid $1,000 every 30 days, just to stream and voice my opinion. And it's only going to get bigger. God, this started in July. It's a lot, been a lot of people that's been streaming for a long time. They haven't even made anything. But I, I know it's going to get bigger for me, especially with me having three TV interviews, and I'm going to speak about Party, and I'm going to speak about cryptocurrencies, and digital assets, and finances, and being a billionaire and trillionaire, and hearing the city, the county treasurer speaking about finances. Because who just doesn't love finances? I love finances. I'm going to be a billionaire, trillionaire, as you guys were just speaking about finances. And County Treasurer McGregor, I'm going to be a billionaire one day. I'm going to change Kent County. I'm going to continuously ethically lead. And the cool thing about it is the esports activation, we have two activations. The students are going to be able to either host a competition, all three days at the DeVos place to actually work on a production, working on the production for colleges and universities and high schools across the United States, the DeVos place. I can't wait to say the DeVos because then they're going to hear it on TV. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment this morning? Good morning.
Morning. My name is Brandy Ritzma. I am a resident at 5500 Osborne, Kentwood, Michigan. I am putting Kent County on formal notice. Public funds are paying guardian at Lydum Stacy Van Dyken, who has violated her fiduciary duties under MCL 712A dot 17C by refusing to contact me, isolating me from my children, signing court orders as plaintiff's lawyer and conditioning reunification on fees I cannot afford. She even chose a reunification therapist employed by CPS, the very agency in, in February that is recorded stating that they don't offer those services. The very agency I'm currently suing. That is a conflict of interest and an abuse of power. Michigan law, MCL 712A dot 18F, Section 4, requires the least restrictive means of reunification. Instead, I faced most restrictive. I cannot even text my children and have not spoken to them in a year. I've been called by doctor's offices, told that if I show up to their appointments, I will be arrested. Stacy Van Dyken watched as the plaintiff, my ex-husband, laughed in my face. Judge Maureen Gottlieb's clerk, Brenna Weber, sent an email before my April 17th hearing demanding four officers be present because I was labeled rowdy. The truth is, I simply objected and cried when I did not understand. That label set me up for contempt and put me in jail. Under MCL 600 dot 1701, contempt must be based on actual obstruction, not exercising my rights. Clerks have taken private Venmo payments for transcripts, which violates MCL 750 dot 214 and MCL 750 dot 219 and MCR 8 dot 119, Section C. Court fees must be paid to the court, not to employees personally, and that is a misconduct of office and I highly doubt they're claiming any of those thousands of dollars I paid on their taxes. My social security benefits protected under 42 U.S.C., subsection 407A were also seized without a court order or a child support order. This is an illegal taking of federal funds. And when Stacy Van Dyken was, I, I confronted her in court, she laughed in my face. Finally, Kent County denies me audio, video, and body cam evidence despite MCR dot 8 dot 119H, the Michigan FOIA Act, and Brady versus Maryland. Denying exculpatory evidence is a violation of due process in the 14th Amendment. If I have paid thousands of dollars for my transcripts and I have brain injuries, I should be allowed to follow along with the video and audio. Other counties in Michigan, you can get your copies of your court hearings, but not in Kent County, which is a violation of my rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment related general county matters this morning? I see none. We will move on to Agenda Item Number 10 and I will call on Vice Chair Burl.
Thank you, Chair Green. I move to go into closed session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, MCL 15 268H, to consider a written opinion of counsel, which is material, which is material that is exempt from disclosure under another state or federal statute.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Teal. Questions, comments, discussion on this item? I see none. This, I believe, is a roll call vote? Yes, roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to move into closed session, Commissioners Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Morse.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Halsted.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioner Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. You may enter closed session.
All right, we've got our stream back up. I'll call the meeting back to order. We are on, I guess technically this is Agenda Item 10A. Potential resolution resulting from closed session. I would like to call on Vice Chair Burl.
Thank you, Chair Green. I would like to move Resolution 88 of today's date. Now therefore be resolved as follows. The Kent County Board of Commissioners does authorize and instruct the county administrator, controller, to A, investigate options relative to the property discussed during the closed session; B, retain professional services to conduct negotiations regarding the property, including execution of a contract contingent on board approval; and C, present his recommendation directly to the Board of Commissioners for consideration without first consideration by the Operations and Policy Committee. Two, pursuant to standing Rule 3, 8A, Rule 5, 1A3, is suspended for purposes of presenting this matter directly to the Board of Commissioners. Three, authorizations provided in this resolution supersede and supplement the requirements for the sale of county real property set forth in facilities and property policy. Four, no agreements will be binding on the county until final approval of the potential transactions by the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.